Because of COVID-19 and social distancing recommendations, our meeting tonight is being held virtually via Zoom. Council members, city staff, and myself are all joining remotely. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions included in the City Council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Public participants will be allowed to make comments through the online chat feature. Please note that your comments are visible to the entire group. If you wish to make a public comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And let's all be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. And if I need to confirm something that was difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. We will begin our meeting this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Audrey, would you please call roll?
Faltin House. Thomas.
Here.
Sash Mocker.
Here.
Rothrock.
Here.
Edman.
Here.
Crane.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
And Flora.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, starting out on item number one, we don't have any public hearings this evening. So we'll move on to item two, special presentations. And we do have two special presentations this evening. The first one is the presentation to the Arbor Day poster contest winner, Caitlin Locker. This is an event that I'm sorry that we can't do in person. It's one of my favorite events of the year and really enjoy it. We're pleased tonight to recognize Caitlin Locker, who is the winner of this year's Arbor Day poster contest. Caitlin is a fifth grader at Russian Elementary, and her winning picture depicts the significance of protecting our trees while highlighting this year's Arbor Day theme, which is we all need Kansas trees for resilient ecosystems. Congratulations, Caitlin, on your beautiful artwork that represents an important message. Would you like to address us, say something to us?
I don't know what to say.
Well, how did you, how did you decide to draw this particular picture?
Well, that, yeah, okay. Well, first of all, I, my grandpa, he's like really into the Lorax. We've been watching it for like ever. And I thought that'd be really good. And then Baby Yoda, I was like legit obsessed with Baby Yoda at the time. So I just thought that'd be cute. And then we had a theme like how we were supposed to draw the picture. So I drew it and then I made a little forest in it just to show that we need trees or else like Earth will not exist. Life as itself will be over, so.
All right, that sounds fantastic. Congratulations. Really appreciate your effort and all the effort of all the kids doing this. So thank you very much. All right, moving on to our second presentation, it's an update on the status of the Gateway Project. And this is with Tom Valente with, from the Cameron Group, who is a developer for this site. So Tom, would you join us and give us an update, please?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be with you, even if it's virtual. Wish I were there in person. I want you to know that we are beyond 100% committed to this project. We are confident that we're going to bring this to completion. Get through this period. I want to share with you some of the reasons for that confidence. And number one is your community. You know, as I've said to you in the past, you know, I started working on this project in 2005, 2006. And the city of Mission itself and its surrounding area is, I think, one of the best communities within which we work. And then more specifically, I just want you to know that we still have our commitment from Banco ZK, who is the primary construction lender. They are hanging in there with us. They're just waiting for the rest of these pieces to fall in place. And, you know, we've got several components to our financing in addition to our construction lender and our own equity. Another component of our financing is a mezzanine loan. And in addition to the mezzanine loan municipal bond financing through the TIF and the CID. At the moment, both the mezzanine market and the bond market are somewhat on hold. But again, I think as we come out of this in the not, hopefully not too distant future, those markets will return. Meanwhile, our development loan lender is, has given us plenty of latitude. We've got plenty of time to work through this, so we're not in any danger there. Our number one tenant in terms of square footage is Synergy, which, as you know, is a combination of a dine-in movie theater, bowling alley, electronic and non-electronic games. Synergy is still on the project. They had opened up their facilities in Texas and Oklahoma. Pleased to report that while they're operating at a very, you know, reduced number of patrons, they're, according to them today, they're still making a slight profit. So that's very good news. And the negative side of their business is that still we, we don't have very much in the way of new movie product. But hopefully over the next couple of months, you know, that will change. The lenders are still somewhat skeptical about what's happening in the movie business. So that's part of the reluctance that we have from the mezzanine lenders. But like I said, I, I think that it's going to be a matter of time as we're coming out of the, you know, this virus period and a vaccine. And, you know, it's proved to be effective and therapeutics have proved to be effective. I think you'll see that change, and I hope that that's soon. Tom Calicchio is still fully committed to the food hall. You know, we're holding off on further design of the food hall until we know where we might end up in light of our current situation, if we've got to make some changes. So we haven't done anything new on, in terms of design, but Tom is fully committed to us. As you know, we will be the operators of the Element Hotel, the 200-room hotel. Currently, mezzanine lenders and the bond market are both skeptical, reluctant to do deals, you know, with on projects that have major components that are hotels. And luckily, we've got a, you know, a primary construction lender that doesn't seem to be bothered by that. So, you know, again, we've got to wait for that bond market and that mezzanine market to come back. We have not secured a sign tenant for the office building yet, although we have been working on it. And, you know, we've had several tenants that, you know, we thought we were getting close with. But, you know, over the last several months, I think everybody has more or less said, you know, we've got to wait and see. So we intend to hang in there. Now, I want you to know that we work on this every day. We have hired a consultant, Jones Lang LaSalle. They are very active in the finance market. They are helping us try to find a way that we might be able to start this whole process sooner rather than later. And I'm hopeful that in the next couple of weeks, we make some progress in that regard. You know, overall, I am still optimistic. I, I am still, as I said at the outset, fully committed to the project. My partner Alan Gross is as well. We are not giving up. We are not giving in. We are going to complete this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I had a question, Mayor.
Yes, Sally.
I know, I know everything is sort of a time of uncertainty right now, but do you have any sense of a realistic timeline for when construction might be able to resume?
Sally, it would be really just a guess. I have no idea. I just don't know. I think so much of it depends on when the vaccine is proven to be effective and when people start to feel comfortable. You know, as I said earlier, we've got to get people in the mezzanine market and people in the bond market comfortable with both synergy primarily as a movie theater and the hotel. But I'm hopeful that, you know, we're going to be there soon. But I, I would be irresponsible to, you know, to be making a guess at this point.
I have a question.
Ken.
Yes, Tom, the obligations to the city, are those in order or are they going to continue?
Yeah.
In terms of the, the routine payments?
Yes, yeah. Thank you. I know we had, we just received a bill from PGAV, and that's getting paid. But yeah, everything else should be up to date, Ken.
Hillary had a question.
Hi, Tom. I was just going to see if we ever, or if you ever have anyone at the office location there. And it seems that the, the look of the site has been deteriorating recently. And just asking that, I understand it's going to be a while till we see any activity resumed there. But if we can just keep the site looking as good as we possibly can, I would really appreciate that. It's, it's hard for me to drive by, as I'm sure it is for all of us. But especially when, you know, the, the fence coverings are flying and, and grass is grown and all of that. So I just ask that you please consider that in the next, whatever, for whatever lies ahead.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you're bringing it up because I had, Charles Patrick is our onsite supervisor. I had a conversation with him two weeks ago on that subject. I'm sorry to hear, you know, I can't see the site, but I'm sorry to hear that that's the case. And I will be on him tomorrow, I assure you. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for Tom?
Yeah, I had one. If anything, like the hotel or the office building or the synergy complex were to fall through, have you had any other contingency plans that you guys have been working towards or any other thoughts there?
Yeah, you know, Nick, yes, but I don't, I'd say what the, what they might be. Yes, I, you know, we have and, but let's leave it at that. I, you know, let me, let me address the hotel specifically only because it's we, I've got an ownership interest in three other hotels. Two of them are doing very well. And they're doing very well primarily because they're near a former US Air Force Base that houses a large component of the Homeland Security Force and Training Group. In addition, we had a number of National Guard servicemen and women staying with us who were involved in the New York State inventorying and logistics for personal protective equipment. We survived, you know, the worst period with that. One of our other hotels is not as fortunate to be in a location where you've got a, you know, a built-in supply of patrons. But, you know, over the last month or so, we've seen a pickup of business in that hotel. Now, we're still not, with that third hotel, we're still not over 50% yet, but we're getting there. And you know, I think, again, you know, the hotels will come back. I can personally tell you that there is a need in the, in that market there for a hotel. And I think it will be very successful. And we'll, we'll get there. I also believe, Nick, that you know, we were in a situation with Banco ZK that we didn't need to have very many leases done in the office building in order to get it under construction. So I think once we get back under construction and people can see that something is happening, I think then the office tenants will, you know, be more interested in potentially making a deal.
Okay, and I know a couple of months ago, we got some reports and I don't know all the details, but some things with unpaid liens or some unpaid work for some contractors. Can you speak to, to where any of that's at? Is, is everything kind of taken care of there now?
They're on hold. There, there are liens with respect to the synergy building. VVS is the contractor, primary contractor. There are a few subs. Everybody is understanding of where we are and, you know, everybody's sort of holding in place. All those liens would be paid off, you know, when we recommence the construction and we close our, our financing. But we've had great cooperation from the contractors.
Thanks. Anybody else have a question for Tom? Hearing none. Well, thank you, Tom.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right. That concludes item two. Let's move on to item three, issuance of notes and bonds. And we do not have any notes or bonds to consider on our agenda this evening. So we will move on to item four, consent agenda. And our consent agenda has 11 items on it tonight. Our council committees met on October 7th, and they fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. Other items considered by the committees will be presented under committee reports later on in our agenda. If a council member or member of the public would like any item removed from the consent agenda, they may make that request at this time. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt a consent agenda as printed, items 4A through 4K.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Faltin House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sash Mocker.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Edman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Flora.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
All right, that concludes item four. Moving on to item five, which is public comments. Is there any member of the public participating via Zoom that would like to make a public comment on an item that's not included on this agenda? And now will be the time. So please submit your comments or questions using the chat feature. And remember that your questions are visible to all of the participants in the Zoom meeting. Moving on to item six, action items planning commission. We don't have any, any items from the planning commission this evening. So we're moving on to item seven, committee reports. First up is Finance Administration, Debbie Crane.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on October 7th and considered eight items, including acceptance of the meeting minutes, the STO/UPOC adoption with the LGR Legislative Advocacy Service Contract, the CARES funding resolution, the employee benefits renewal for 2021, as well as the purchases of computer replacements, Microsoft Office 365, and Adobe Acrobat licenses were all approved under the consent agenda. The Rock Creek Tax Increment Financing District Number 3A and Tax Increment Financing Project Plan for the Mission Bowl Apartments LLC at 5399 Markway was reviewed and discussed at the work session meeting this evening prior to this one. There are no additional items for consideration on tonight's regular agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Community Development, Sally Flora.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on October 7th and considered six items. These included acceptance of the committee minutes along with the purchases of two Clorox Total 360 sprayers, up to two riding floor scrubbers, a single axle dump truck, a skid steer with attachments, a lighted arrowboard, as well as the retrofit of touchless features at city facilities. There is one additional item for council's consideration on our regular agenda tonight. That is item 7A, Hodges 61st Terrace Intersection. The planters along Hodges Drive at 61st Terrace, 62nd Street, and 62nd Terrace were installed in the mid 1990s to replace barricades that had been in place since the 1970s. One of the planters was severely damaged in 2018. And since that time, the city has facilitated public meetings and a working group, composed of residents, staff, and representatives from George Butler Associates, GBA, to evaluate long-term alternatives and solutions. In September, late September 2020, staff presented a schematic to the working group, which includes installation of a gate as well as an extended curb to narrow the intersection to discourage drivers from thinking that this entrance is a street. The working group reached consensus on the design and is recommending council proceed with installation. The updated cost estimate provided by GBA is approximately $29,050, assuming that the project is bid standalone. In order to complete this project within the existing budget, city crews plan to construct all of this work with the exception of the curb and gutter, which will be completed by a subcontractor. The estimated project cost using city crews and subcontracting the curb and gutter is approximately $9,000. If the City Council approves to move forward with this option, is the goal to construct the project by the end of this year, depending on contractor and vendor availability. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the installation of a gate and extended curb to replace the planters at the Hodges and 61st Terrace Intersection.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Hillary.
I just had a question, and I apologize I missed the discussion as I was late to our committee meetings. But I was just wondering if the $9,000 using, using our crews and then just contracting out for the curb and gutter, if that included our crew labor time? I'm just curious.
You're muted.
Celia, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, no, that doesn't include our labor time. That, that just includes the curb and gutter and the sod and any kind of materials we're using, including the gate.
Including the gate.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
I, I would just say that I know we had some conversation at the committee meeting about the concern about access for pedestrians and/or, you know, sort of bicycles. And I know GBA has offset that gate slightly to accommodate that since that committee meeting. So that's the design that we will be proceeding with.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, if we were to move forward with this intersection, I believe there are two others that are in similar situations over there, right? What would be the timeline on looking to, to do some of those other intersections along Hodges? Or would we be considering doing the same thing?
Well, I think what we wanted to do is go ahead and move forward with this one, obviously, where the planter was damaged, to sort of test out the solution, see how it works. And then I think we can come back and evaluate. We hadn't really set a specific timeframe on that. Depending on how we feel about this design solution, there may be some other things that we want to consider potentially in, in concert with, you know, a street, street reconstruction or other things that might be occurring over time.
Any other questions, comments?
So along that line, is there any potential liability if we left those planters there?
Left the planters at the, at the intersection we're talking about this evening?
Yeah, we're at any of them. Is there any kind of potential liability from a, you know, traffic control standpoint or anything to the city?
No, I think what, and Dave Martin can weigh in if I don't get this correct. But I think as we talked about it last fall, we weren't increasing our liability. We have added, since those conversations, we have added reflective signage to the existing planters. I think ultimately our, our goal in, in looking at this gate solution is the gate solution. We believe one of the, the things that it does accomplish is it decreases or has the potential to decrease our liability because if you had someone, a vehicle that, you know, had a crash or impact with that gate, the likelihood of serious injury is less than if they'd hit the existing planters.
Anybody else? Yes, Hillary.
Yeah, just one more question, Laura, about process. If we, this moves ahead, do you plan to inform all the folks on that street? Or is that something people from the working group are going to do prior to starting this work? Are we confident that everyone will feel good about this solution?
I, we will inform everybody who, who we've got contact information. And with all of that, I think, you know, our takeaway up to this point has been that they've, that neighborhood has empowered the working group to, to kind of, you know, speak for them. So I think we're not that far off. And, and I think that, you know, we did circulate the solution with the pavers and the one that, that came back with the bids that were, you know, extraordinarily high. So I think in general, we've tried to keep as much of the concept of that design solution intact. So I, yes, we will communicate back with the full neighborhood. But I think the working group has been doing that throughout the process as well.
All right, anybody else? Seeing or hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Faltin House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sash Mocker.
Nay.
Crane.
Aye.
Edman.
Aye.
And Rothrock.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, that concludes item seven. Moving on to item eight, unfinished business. We do not have any items for unfinished business. Moving on to item nine, which is new business. We do have two items to be considered under new business. The first is the City of Mission State of Emergency Disaster Proclamation related to COVID-19. Ms. Smith.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Same song, different verse. Again, we've talked about this for several months, all the way back to March of this year. We have continued to sort of extend our proclamation as the state's emergency declaration has been extended on a month-to-month basis. Our staff recommendation before you this evening is to go ahead and extend our emergency declaration through the end of this calendar year, so December 31st of 2020. The state declaration has not yet been extended that far. But we feel like the, the primary benefit at this point for our emergency declaration is it provides us some flexibility in some of our purchasing processes. And since we know we are actively engaged in, in acquiring and purchasing and installing a variety of different pieces of equipment and systems with the CARES Act funding, that we feel like that provides us that, that flexibility. And those funds at this point need to be expended by December 30th. So our hope is that maybe we'll have a little bit, a more definitive picture, but then we won't have to talk about this again at our November meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the City Council approve the extension of the City of Mission's State of Emergency Disaster Proclamation related to COVID-19 through December 31st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion on this item. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this item. Hearing none. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Edman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
And Sash Walker. Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Our second item is the Johnson County Coronavirus Relief Fund Purchase Authorization. Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I believe Emily is going to screen share an updated action item, which we revised kind of late this afternoon. As we discussed at the committee meeting, we are moving as quickly as we can to try to get items and projects identified and purchased and installed by that December 30th timeline. And it is a constantly moving process. So we appreciate the latitude that the council, the direction that the council provided us at the committee meeting to kind of keep things moving. When we sent the packet out last Friday, we didn't have some information on particularly the audiovisual equipment quotes. Those came in and were finalized just earlier today. So we've updated this. I did actually catch a mistake, although it's not going to matter now based on another email that I had at 4:30, but I had inadvertently left out the Microsoft Office 365 purchase and the items that were previously included on our consent agenda. That was not in our original submission to the county. It was an item that had been submitted and identified as an eligible expense for reimbursement with a low audit risk by many of the other communities in Johnson County. We, as we've gone through this process, we've also been updating our request list with the county, and I had sent that off, and I received notice back late this afternoon that they've approved all of the other things on our list with the exception of Microsoft Office 365. And they didn't give an explanation for that, so I've asked for why if it was shown as an eligible expense. I suppose the good news is there that something we had, at least at one point, anticipated in our 2020 budget. So take Microsoft Office 365 off of this list. These, and all of these items were then approved on your consent agenda. Emily, if you'll scroll down, please. Some of the items that we've had in progress and that we're recommending that we're, we could be allowed to proceed with purchase would be this Tersona Cleaning and Sanitizing System. This is something that we saw as we were kind of reviewing requests from other cities. I know that Penn has visited some of the other facilities in Johnson County who are using this sanitizing system. And not only is it really effective in the sanitizing process, but it actually uses fewer chemicals and cleaning solutions. And it's going to allow us to not only, I think, reduce expenses by eliminating three different cleaners that we currently use, but it also is a much more sustainable process in the mix. So I think this one is a win all the way around. Modular Furniture Systems, this is something we had talked about at the committee meeting. We've gone down and really narrowed and thought about and worked through the areas that we think that we can modify and get accomplished by December 30th. And we've revisited and are rethinking some of the other areas, particularly in community development and municipal court and the police records area, that I think require a little bit more thought in terms of what is the best long-term solution. So our recommendation is to proceed with the installation of modular furniture in the area for the city clerk, the police report writing area, the police supervisor's office, the community center program offices on the second floor, the community center membership and rental office on the first floor, and the Public Works Administrative Assistance Workspace, for a total for all of those areas of $36,500. We are looking at, have been researching audiovisual upgrades to the council chambers and the community center, particularly the community center in the conference center area, anticipating that we may need to, if we return to in-person meetings, we will be needing to do so in a way that allows us to create better physical distancing than we would be able to accomplish in the council chambers. And that's why you see the much more significant investment in the upgrade of the systems there, looking to be able to use that conference space really as probably our primary meeting space going forward or as an alternative into the future. So the quote of $8,200 for the council chambers is firm. There's still some things that the vendor is researching, but they did commit to a not-to-exceed price of $69,000. Then we have been looking at, again, the air purification ionization systems for City Hall, the Police Department, and the Public Works Facility. I believe we are currently also, based on our conversations at the committee meeting, going back and looking at options for the community center as well with the county pulling the Microsoft Office 365 off of the list. We've got some flexibility and we still have some dollars to spend. So if that comes back within the budgets, we would recommend adding that at the community center as well. And Emily, if you'll scroll down just one more time. So the total cost for items included in what we're seeking authorization for this evening is approximately $127,598. We can ignore the rest of that paragraph because we aren't higher than the amount remaining in our reimbursement total based on the email that I received earlier today. So a couple of other options in your previous approval, we had said if there was budget flexibility, we would purchase that second rider scrubber for the Public Works Facility, which we know is already an approved expense. The county also released, end of last week, information, and they will be going through a potential reimbursement process for any dollars that we have paid out for the emergency sick leave or the emergency family medical leave related to COVID-19 that was authorized. So anything that we've paid out there. So we will have the opportunity, I think, still to take advantage of all of the funds that will be available to us through this CARES Act reimbursement. So we would just look for council support and authorization to allow us to proceed with the items included in this action item.
Mayor.
Yes, Ken.
I move that the city council to authorize the city administrator or her designee to proceed with the purchase of the items qualified for reimbursement through the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF, administered by Johnson County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I just want to say thank you, Laura, for all the work that you're doing on this along with staff to make sure that we maximize our use of the care funds. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I think lots of kudos to Emily, to Dan Madden, to Brian Scott, to Rob Myers, who isn't on these calls, and Penn, and Celia, and others who have really been working to try to find the best ways to use these dollars to look at improvements that make sense, both for our constituency and for our employees and our facilities. So thank you for that.
All right, anybody else?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Hillary.
Thank you. I was just wondering if the AV upgrades included any upgraded software for virtual meetings? Or if it's all really just the hardware for City Hall and Community Center?
I'll have to let interim chief Madden answer that question because I know nothing about that.
So the improvements at both facilities will include web conferencing capabilities. The quote will come in for three web conferencing cameras, one in each conference center room. And those will have the ability to stream independently or together as the current, similar to the current situation with the microphone audio visual system. The whole audio system will have to be rebuilt essentially because the current system is aged and it does not have the ability to allow for the number of microphones needed to conduct the public meetings at the facility.
So at the point, and Laura, please stop me if, you know, we're not quite there yet, but I'm curious when we do get to that point, how we plan to engage public comment or if that's still kind of in the works being formulated based off our survey?
I think I can speak to it. We're, you know, still working on how it will actually be implemented. And I think kind of keeping in the backs of our minds, the COVID and then after COVID process and whether or not we have to come up with an iterative solution. We will through, we have a better device. We've kind of used an outdated system. So we'll have kind of better reassurances about our streaming capability. Just if we were trying to meet where we used to be, I think Dan's really improved our audio and our streaming capabilities so far. And so then just in terms of public comment, we'll have to see both our configuration of room and then also kind of what we want to accommodate with screens. You know, if all of us are virtual still or not, and then if we're in person, what our public will be expecting at that time just based on COVID and comfort level, I think.
Thank you.
And I'll share back the full results of the council survey. But in a nutshell, I think the general consensus was you didn't feel it was important that, you know, you were looking for ways to make sure we maximize the opportunities for the public to participate in whatever way they were comfortable. I think our challenges remain as we've tried to investigate software to facilitate or accommodate some sort of hybrid meeting. We are sort of running into some challenges. So if any of the rest of you who are out there using all of this on a daily basis and your, you know, other lives have suggestions or ideas that you can share with us, please feel free because the stones that we've overturned have not resulted in anything that we feel like would be a viable option for us for a hybrid meeting solution.
Sally.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was going to ask was what are we doing to ensure that the AV buildout that we're doing would be compatible with a hybrid system? But it sounds like that's still under investigation.
All right, anybody else? Right, hearing none. Audrey, please call for the votes.
Edman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Flora.
Hi.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sash Walker.
Aye.
And Rothrock.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, that concludes Item Nine. Moving on to Item Ten, Comments from City Council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to share? Debbie, then Trent.
Wanted to report that a week and a half ago, we had a young man with a potential drug overdose across the street from my driveway. I just want to commend the police, the police, ambulances, fire trucks, everybody was there, and they did an amazing job. And you were actually able to witness them speaking to the young man, trying to get him coherent again. And the police did an amazing job. I just want to thank them for that. They did great. Secondly, I had a call today on caring for kids, and I did inquire where we are status-wise on where Rushton lies in getting a rebuild. And it looks like Rushton is still second on the list for a potential rebuild, and they'll revisit that again in the spring. Thank you.
Well, to piggyback on that, there are currently three different plans. The school district is, I guess, getting feelers on. It's on their website. There's a Plan A, B, and C. And Rushton is a portion, is on each of those plans. They involve different levels of bonding. And I believe that the school district is going to take a survey to see what the appetite is. But Rushton is on all three of those plans, depending on which way they decide to go. And they're talking about a bond issue in the spring, January, probably.
Thank you.
Trent.
Thanks. I wanted to give a quick update on voter-to-voter. We are currently in second place amongst all the teams we're competing against behind Prairie Village between our seven ambassadors right now. And I think there's still a couple of you who have expressed interest in wanting to join, but just haven't yet. It's not too late to sign up and be an ambassador. But we've cumulatively registered or added 329 people into our dashboard. Five percent of them have voted already. And of those 329, 40% are considered low propensity, which means that they've voted in two or less of the last four elections. So we get points for all of that. Keep adding your folks. I'm still adding people every day. And we, you know, we could really use your help and assistance to help beat Prairie Village here in the next 12, 13 days until the election. And we also wanted to mention that we're having Award One meeting next Thursday at 6:30 on Zoom.
Okay, anybody else have anything they want to share?
I had, I had one more.
Yes, Debbie.
Sorry, and this may come up under Laura's report, but I believe we're going to hold a meeting next Thursday, October, excuse me, Wednesday, October 28th to discuss the update on the street program. Is that correct? I know we have several constituents on the line, so I'm just want, maybe Laura will mention that in her city administrator update. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I was just going to say, if anybody is thinking about early voting, I went today, and just to report back on it, there was a pretty long line, but it still only took about 20 minutes to get through there. So they run a pretty great, quick operation over there. And I recommend everyone get in early so you're not having to scramble to do it on election day.
Right, anybody else? Ken.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, Award Four meeting is going to be held on November the 10th. And so that'll be our quarterly meeting. I also attended the First Suburbs Meeting along with Emily Randall. It was a very good meeting about housing, and the information has been shared with the council and the mayor. We also, Sally Flora and myself, attended the League of Kansas Municipalities, which was a virtual meeting, virtual conference. Had very good aspects of it, and the information is available still on the web if people wish to see some of the featured speakers.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to Item 11, Mayor's Report. I have one item tomorrow at 4 o'clock. There is a ribbon cutting for the food pantry at Trinity Lutheran Church. So, what does anybody know about that? That concludes my report. Moving on to City Administrator, Ms. Smith. How about a September interim financial report?
Yes, Mayor, and if you don't mind, I might run through my other items quickly, and then we'll conclude with that. I do have a question. I think we had been planning and or discussing, and at least it was on my radar screen, that we were having a work session on our second work session on our street maintenance program at kind of that fourth Wednesday in October, which would be next Wednesday, the 28th. But I understand, is that potentially going to conflict with Award One meeting? No?
Thursday, the 29th.
Thursday, the 29th, okay. So we are going to be having our second meeting on the street reprioritization of our residential street program at 6:00. Generally, I think we set that for 6:30 PM, correct?
I have it at 6:00.
Does we have it at 6:00? Okay. So yes, we do have a street work session. We'll confirm that time. It looks like 6 o'clock next week to kind of continue to advance that conversation. We may have some materials that come out as a handout that we'll have. It's really not as many handouts this evening or for that next meeting. I think what we'll be talking about more is some of the continued work that Celia has done and really trying to map out streets. I know she's got some information about streets that have been touched in the last 10 years, and we've created some new maps and some handouts and exhibits. So, and then I've been working on potential budget scenarios. So again, more conversation to come on that next Wednesday night. So again, more conversation to come on that next Wednesday night. I was going to mention the community food pantry the mayor mentioned, and a couple of other things, the How Halloween Dog Costume Contest Event is scheduled for this coming Saturday at Anderson Park from 9 to 11. And I know, I think, Penn, you switched to a signup system. Is that correct?
Yes, we wanted to gauge initial interest by having a pre-registration. We had one individual pre-register, so we can take registrations on-site now, too.
Great. Thank you. That'll be fun event. Just a, Celia shared with us at our leadership team meeting earlier this week that the Royal Court Homes Association parking lot is now paved. So I haven't had the opportunity to get over and take a look at that, but I do intend to do that later, which I'm sure those residents are thrilled to be able to ensure that they'll be able to access their garages before winter weather sets in. So thank you to Celia and the contractor and everybody who helped and is helping get that project across the finish line. Please remind people, along with voting, to also go out and provide input and feedback in the comp plan website. I know the traction and traffic on that has been lower than what we had anticipated. So if you can encourage folks to go out through the end of November and share their opinions and preferences with us, that would be helpful as we advance that conversation. So my last thing is September interim financials. The good news is we're seeing some improvements or maintenance of kind of keeping on track with our original budget estimates and not seeing the reductions in some of the revenue streams that we had anticipated when we put our 2021 budget together. Particularly, sales tax revenues continue to track and very well and are really performing very strongly through the end of this year. We're seeing some recovery in some of the other line items. We continue to see kind of our biggest impact in community center revenues. I can tell you that the last couple of weeks, the community center, the usage of the community center, we've seen daily totals return to about 50% of what they would be in a typical pre-pandemic environment. So still very low usage in the facilities. But one of the things that Penn and I have been doing over the last month is sort of really taking a deeper dive into those revenue streams at the community center and the impacts of insurance memberships and paid-in-full memberships and a variety of other things. He's been talking with directors and managers at some of the other community center facilities. I think we're experiencing, I don't know that it's a consolation or provides any comfort. We're experiencing about the same decreases and declines that other community centers in our area are experiencing. So we will be bringing back to you, I think, really starting in earnest next month, kind of our conversations around what alternatives we might have going forward. I think, and I'll do some additional analysis of the budget for us to consider as we move through that. When I was putting this together and just looking very quickly, I feel fairly confident in saying that between where I think we're going to end up from a revenue perspective and what I think we will save on the expenditure side, I think we're going to do about $800,000, at least $800,000 better than what we thought we would when we adopted the 2021 budget. So I think we're going to be going into 2021 without having dipped into that excess fund balance to the extent that we thought we were going to. So I've got a new chart that I'm working on to update that I think will reflect that. But I think, again, we've seen some improvement, and I think it's not insignificant improvement since when we put the budget together, but I think we're going to have to continue to see that improvement or make some structural changes as we continue to head into the future. So, you know, again, we continue to hold positions open. Several of the positions are open. We are filling them or moving forward sort of very judiciously. Again, community service officer, where we've had the opportunity to provide services to other communities, which are actually generate revenue for us and some of those other positions. So we'll continue to monitor that. I think, as we talked about in our committee meeting, and it got buried a little bit because it was on the consent agenda tonight, but we didn't have any increase in health insurance premiums, employee health insurance premiums for 2021, which is a benefit, obviously, both for the employer and the employees. I think that resulted from when we put the budget together. I think we identified at our committee meeting that was about a $75,000 savings over what we had budgeted. So, you know, we are certainly, the picture is not rosy by any stretch of the imagination, but I think we're seeing some positive improvements in some areas. So I'm happy to answer other questions. If, as you've kind of, this is the second month you've had more of a summarized report. If there are other things that you want to see us including or tracking or reporting back to you in these intramonthly financials, please let me know.
Sorry.
I was wondering, for next time, is there any way to get the headers to repeat? Like, when it cuts across a page for the headers to carry over on the financials? Because sometimes it's hard to flip back and forth and track the columns when they carry over. And then subsequently, did you say we'd get a deeper dive on the community center next month? I think that was what the packet said.
Yeah.
Okay. And if it's not possible on the headings, or if it's a big pain, not a huge deal, it would just be helpful.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure in looking at that because it comes out of government. I'm not sure that we have the ability, but we'll talk with our staff who are more expert in getting the layout of this done.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so that concludes your report?
Yes, it does, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 13, which is executive session. We do not have a need for an executive session this evening. So we're on, before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website, missionks.org. There being no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.